We go, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay.
The February 12th meeting of the Milltown Borough Council now come to order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided as required under Chapter 231 PL 1975 specifying the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy to the official newspapers of the borough, and by filing a copy in the office of the borough clerk in accordance with certification by the clerk which will be entered into the minutes.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Revolinsky.
Here.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Menko.
Here.
Councilman Posnansky.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Councilman Zambrana.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Here.
Borough Attorney Peter Vignolo.
Present.
All three Borough Engineers.
Here.
Borough Administrator Fred Carr. Borough Clerk Monica Orlando. I'm here, and Deputy Clerk Mary Guiney.
Please join me in a moment of silence followed by two flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a CME presentation on Albert Avenue Park improvements. I'm actually thankful that we have all these residents to see the park improvements, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll talk there, can you give me this?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have with us tonight Lou Plaskovka, who's a project manager with the firm who most of you know, and we have an engineer in training Alec Rankin tonight, so we're going to ask Lou and Alec to begin the presentation and get this thing underway for you. So, without further ado, take it away, Lou.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, so this project is basically a bike path project. It's being constructed through a grant from the NJDOT Bike Way Program. The borough was successful in acquiring, it's a $255,000 grant. There's been, it started out as a bike path, there's been a number of iterations to the plan. There are some additional improvements that have been suggested by various committees, so we're here to talk to you about the original plan and what these additional improvements might be, and the costs associated with those. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alec, and he's going to run through the plan.
Sorry. Hi, everybody. So, to give a quick overview of the proposed improvements that we have currently for the plan, if you want to bring your attention to the page over here. in the Albert Avenue Park, specifically in the area of the Hill Street and Albert Avenue The initial bike path design was to be started from the intersection of Albert Avenue and Hill Street at the existing entrance or crosswalk, and to run up around Hill Street along the tree line of the back of the park, and initially to come down along the first base line of the existing softball field. There was initial comments, were first revision where we initially added in additional path to go around the existing volleyball court and playground area instead of coming down the first base line. Along with those improvements, the borough also included some additions to the park itself, so as of now, the base estimate for the bike path additions that we kind of just laid out were at $259,000. In the, I guess I'll call them the original additions from the township, there were, I'm going to list the few additions that they, I guess, proposed, and some quick improvement costs with contingencies that we came up with each of these. Thank you. So, for the first improvement was bike path entrances and crosswalks across Hill Street and Albert Avenue. So, these are additional crosswalks and entrances to the bike path with mid-block crosswalks at the Hill Street, and I think it's Desmond Avenue intersection along with the Albert, and I forget the name of the street down here, Royal Court intersection. This includes obviously the technical warning surface, depressed curb ramp, and crosswalk and striping. Those, the estimated improvement cost with contingencies for that addition would be around $16,000. The next one is the parking area paving, so next to the existing restroom facilities, the improvements would include overlaying the existing gravel area there with HMA surface course to provide a parking area for one, utility vehicles or police vehicles or anything that has to access either the restroom facilities or the softball field while at the park. These improvements costs were approximately, or estimated approximately, $27,000. Next, to build on top of that, right next to it, we have the softball field improvements. So, softball field improvements includes new perpendicular arch backstop along with new proposed team benches and fencing along both the first base and third base line. These softball field improvements were estimated at approximately $95,000. The next addition is additional path along the first base line, so with, I guess, reducing our path along the first base line to go around the volleyball courts to provide access to the bleachers on the first base line, we're providing an eight-foot path around the back of the backstop. This improvement is estimated to be approximately $12,000. Finally, or not finally, the last, or second to last improvement for the first round of additions was pedestrian benches all throughout the park. As you can see, these are a little small, but the small rectangles along each of the bike path. As of now, we kind of came up with a number of thirteen benches throughout the park, and those improvements are estimated at approximately $110,000. Finally, for the first review additions, the spectator bleacher pads and path, so there is existing concrete pads where the spectator bleachers are, but because of the improvements of the backstop, we have to, I guess, move back some of that spectator bleaching, or bleacher area, so we provided a new concrete pad and existing asphalt walkways, or proposed asphalt walkways for those. Those improvements are listed at approximately $12,000. So, obviously, these are shown on the plan, we reviewed, or we received additional comments for additions in the park as well. These ones aren't shown on the plan, but we came up with budgets, budgets for them for the council. So, so for the second additions, the first item is bike path entrance lights and security cameras. This would be proposing lights at all three entrances, as you can see, the ones that we showed before, along with possible lighting and security cameras in the north and southwest portion of the park. This will include four light poles, three security cameras, along with all the other electrical items like conduit wiring and connections to existing power sources along Hill Street and Albert Avenue. These costs were estimated at approximately $153,000. Next addition was conduit crossings. So, the first item is for, you know, proposed lighting in the park. Conduit crossings would be something we'd add during the construction of the bike path in preparation of future lighting improvements throughout the park, so obviously maybe not just at your entrances, but along the path itself, the entire route. These would be conduit crossings every 100 feet to anticipate, again, future improvements, future electrical improvements in the park. This was estimated at approximately $14,000 to include those in the bike path construction. Next item is bike path add-ons. It's a pretty general term, but this includes the installation of five mile markers along the path, three bike racks, and two bike repair and air pump stations, along with additional path markings, one arrows, just to tell you where you are along the path and what direction it should be going in. These improvements are estimated at $21,000. Next item is the trash receptacles in the park. This includes a furnishing installing of five waste and recycling container sets throughout the park in between or next to some of the proposed benches. For five waste recycling container sets, we anticipate the furniture installing to be approximately $25,000. Next item, the additional fencing for ball fields. So, as you can see, the path runs along the back tree line, but also very close to the existing softball fields and soccer field, so to increase, or just to make sure nobody gets hit by any, you know, flying softballs or soccer balls, we're proposing an eight-foot fence to almost come from the Hill Street intersection to the edge of the first base softball field line, along with a gate in the middle to access, obviously, any of the inside field that might be cut off from this fencing. Those improvements are estimated around $84,000. Next is a concrete pad storage container, or it's concrete pad for storage container. So, this would be proposed right next to the existing restroom facilities. It would be a 20-by-10 concrete pad that would be placed there for, existing storage container would be put there for any storage equipment for softball fields, soccer fields, basketball courts, and really anything inside the park. Finally, the last item for this second addition is the, is Albert Avenue Speed Control and additional crosswalk warnings. So, we're alerted that Albert Avenue, obviously with these updates to the park, because of through street at the intersection of Albert Avenue and Hill Street, there are cars coming through there a little too fast. So, these improvements include the installation of one speed hump, along with additional striping signage to go along with it, and the installation of one pair of rectangular rapid flashing beacons for the Albert Avenue-Hill Street intersection. These signs we placed at Albert Avenue at the proposed crosswalk, and speed hump will vary depending on where along Albert Avenue we feel like it's needed the most. And I believe that's it for the, oh, sorry, cost. The estimated cost for those improvements were $47,000 for the speed control and additional crosswalk warning.
You may have missed a concrete pad, too.
No, no, the price on the concrete pad.
Oh. Oh, I apologize. That was going to be, or that's estimated at $4,000.
What's the total cost?
The total cost of all additions?
Great.
Currently, that is $620,000. So, obviously, that could be picking and choosing, but that's the all-inclusive of including all those additions I just listed off.
Something else we can consider, actually, if you can find out the cost for the future, is actually to extend it all the way around the back.
Yeah, which we spoke about the other day, because if we, if we do apply for some additional monies through the county of this base grant, we'd like to see that path continue all the way over towards Colthow.
A little over $125,000.
Estimate?
Yes. I'll add, there's a pregnant pace of park improvement. It's typical, we've seen prices in parks tend to be percent over some of your, over just one of the things that they are, especially, you know, the pandemic, we see prices very high.
So, I guess my question is, when does this, well, you have items we have to pick and choose, when do we have to have a final, because I know you've already asked for an extension to use this money, so what is our due date?
Well, as I understand it, you are going to deliberate over whether you're going to increase your ordinance. I think that if you tell us what you need to renew, we'll have to run it through you. Right now, you're running around a little over $700,000 full profit. You need to, you know, your ordinance does not have that kind of money. The administrator had that conversation, looking to possibly introduce an ordinance maybe at your next meeting to increase it. You only need to know which one to walk, and we'll have to run it, but then you get your money in place for it to go through.
And this includes all the comments that came through? I know we went through, sorry, let me turn this back up. I know we went through the Recreation Advisory Committee, the DPW Committee, I think Utility threw a couple suggestions in there as well, so this encompasses all of those recommendations and all those asks?
Yes.
Anything else? I know with the Police Department, we had included the illuminated crosswalks and the speed humps. Is there anything else that in your review or your professional opinion, as you guys were going through, maybe your minds changed on a thing or two, or you thought this should be included or not be included?
No, I think the list is comprehensive. I think in terms of typical park work, when you have a park property, remember, the money you got for the walkway was a specific NJDOT grant. It doesn't, it's not a park improvement grant, it's a, it's an effort to try and invite ways and encourage people. What you're doing now is increases of the park improvement, and I can tell you, I remember when Albert Avenue was not even made in a park, but then I go back a little time, it was, it was a small field, it was actually widened and recreated to name it. So, it's come a long way, and you know, it's something that is a good improvement.
I've been keeping numbers here. For anyone else who is listening along and might not have had a calculator in hand, everything included, the additional, all the way over to Colthow of the bike path, was 804,000 estimated. Subtract the $250,000 grant that we have currently in-house from the DOT for the bike path, and you're left with another $554,000 for financing. We did submit a letter of intent, the DPW Director submitted a letter of intent to the county this week, inquiring about an open space, non-matching fund, just a grant, basically a handout from the county, which is for $500,000 annually. So, that would, based on these estimates, increase Milltown's, or leave Milltown with about five, $54,000.
Total.
Leftover out of, out of our pockets, so to speak. We have not applied for that grant, just a letter of intent of, we want to apply just to get on their list. Any additional costs? After that, we've got construction administration costs, is that correct?
We have all numbers, yeah.
Okay. Oh, those are full numbers for, okay.
All this, is that, you said, all soft costs involved?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we rolled them all in.
Any more questions?
Do we want to? But you were saying the 804 includes the extension?
Yes.
All the $25,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to say, does anyone else from, you want to open this up to the public at this time for any other comments, just while we have CME here, because I know we have to go to executive session?
Right. I did have one question. What about the posts for the pavilions? Was that supposed to be part of the repairs?
I know, I think Ralph had a price for that already, for replacing those, so that we need to add it into this scope of work as well. I think that was around $10,000 or $12,000.
You do get a conscience, yeah, we have.
And perhaps they could take the two existing goalies out, the goalposts that are there that are, the nets are destroyed and nobody uses the full-size field anyway, it's all small goals.
Okay. Six. And this is all regrading, right, Mike, along, along Hill Street, because there's dips over there. Yeah, it's, you know, trying to save the trees, that's again.
Is there an anticipated number of removed trees or approximate number?
Give it a second, we'll check it out.
No worries.
I think we have about six.
Six, along Hill Street, right?
Yeah, there's a couple near where that parking area would be paved. There's one near the storm sewer extension on the corner.
Are those the big Xs?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the goals, not make a tree, but we're trying to.
Yeah, so, existing on, along Hill Street, you can see we tried to avoid most of the trees you could probably see in the area, but as you go towards the back tree line, it's also a matter of trying to stay within the tree line, but also give enough clearance off the bike path, so some of them have to be removed just because of their vicinity to the bike path. Along with, again, some might be dependent on some of the additions, like the arch backstop. I know as of now, the existing backstop's pretty small, but with the proposed perpendicular arch backstop, that one might push back a little bit, and I know there's a little gravel area with a few trees. Some of those might be removed if that addition is included.
Okay. Thank you. How did the slope look for the parking area? I know that kind of dips downward towards those field. Would it be to maintain that slope and the water would just run towards the field, or is there, I don't know, any sort of trench drain or something to redirect that flow?
Yeah, we're going to have to do some braiding over there.
Okay. And that's included in the estimated cost?
Yes.
They need a small wall, I know with rapid odds, maybe a small wall.
We were, we were kind of thinking that, too. I know that's one of the things we discussed, was perhaps a small retaining wall, whether it be 24 inches tall, maybe a fence at the end of it so a car doesn't just accidentally drive too far.
Yeah. We may. This doesn't include any field improvements, right, into the soccer field? Not at this time, no.
All right. Does any of the residents have?
I can't, I'm thinking, and again, not my field of expertise, but seems a lot for backstop and benches. Is there an evaluation of what is labor, what is material into that? Even just a roughly?
Yeah, we don't have with this, but we certainly get any of this. If you're over high, because usually that's a, it's basic fence with PVC coating, so it's not like when we were kids, it was just regular gallon on its fence, but today, especially those curved backstops, they're vinyl coated fence, and it's done in a way that's less visible, like if you take it black, but we could certainly get a break down if you want. These are actual prices that we receive for these things. That's a fairly common backstop, so we use the price contract to give us for some other job.
Okay. I mean, with the grant, it becomes less of an issue, but if it's financed, I just think it's just something, it's just a number that kind of, kind of hit me in the head. Additionally, the benches that are on the outside, as I've been to that park, and again, my limited experience with that park is more about rec soccer and some of those games, and all the benches on the outside and those that would wrap around the bike path, they're not particularly visual points for people to watch any of the ongoing sports. I know in some of the rec meetings, there was some discussion of maybe tables or some type of seating that would give a little more, you know, intimate or closer, you know, to the, to that spot, but then you run into problems of people taking those all day, taking over the field with them. But some of that came up. Just wondering, is that still kind of on the table, final placement of all those benches?
Yeah, the, the intricacy of field design are significant these days, but you could have team benches if you designate for the two teams, and they'd be on either side of the center line. And then you can have spectator benches, they become part of the field now, because these things are all considered instructions to the player, so when you decide what you want to flip those, they become part of it. It's not hard to do, it's just you have to recognize, you have a very small field there. You can go to the short-sized field where you, that's W, basically played long, at the end of Long Hill Street, and go the opposite direction, now those all can flip. So, you know, you have to decide, what you could do is go to portable benches, and that's, you know, a little more trouble guy around, and you've heard the trouble works, but that's another reason that, that you have portable team benches or portable spectator. All something, those are not really not very expensive, you buy those yourself in the fall, but you have to remember, this clears over something that you're going to have to recognize, that it's an issue to explain team soccer.
Okay. Thank you. Question about the lights, you mentioned three lights, one at each of the crosswalks. Are those just intended to be telephone poles with a standard street light on there, or are we looking at something more architecturally pleasing?
We propose a standard light we have around the castle, we have park lighting in the parks, and we have to put those in before those we price the people.
It's pretty much the same way Jack out front here.
Okay. Yep.
So, just to let you know, I pulled up one of my emails from last year regarding the capital list, and part of it was the support polls for the pavilions that the mayor brought up. So, just to let you know, they had that as a cost of $9,000. So, just an idea, and that was in the capital plan for last year. And I know we also had garbage cans, too, at $10,000. When you mentioned that, I just wanted to go back and see what's there.
So, it's actually kind of nice that this, you know, kind of expanding upon just from a bike path to a full park improvement, we're starting to also take on some of the other things that we were initially budgeted for, might not have gotten to.
Yep. Hi, Rick.
I'll move closer to the microphone.
Thank you.
Is I okay?
Did any members want to comment on specifically just the park improvement? I know we have a couple. Michael Melk, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Michael Shakarjan, 19 Yarnell Avenue, Environmental Commission. Just a question about the trees that are, that would come down with the path, et cetera. It would be nice to know what the caliber of the trees are, the species, and whether it would make sense for replacements to be put somewhere. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, we're going to go into public comment. So, now is the time for public comment, limited to the resolutions listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, say your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no comments, this portion of the meeting is closed to the public. All right. So, will the clerk please read Resolutions 2465, entering executive session?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, public law in 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this, this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss personnel matters, and whereas minutes will be kept and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Okay. We're going to go to the.
We're gonna go down the hall for?
We need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Will clerk, uh, please call roll.
Council President Revolinsky.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Menko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Time is 7:30.
We're gonna go down the hall for a few minutes and we'll be back. All right, we are back in open session at 8:01. Will clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Revolinsky.
Here.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Poznanski.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Councilman Zambrana.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Here.
Monica?
Councilman Menko?
I didn't say Menko? Guess I did. Collins, Menko, did I skip over you? I'm sorry, Councilman Menko.
Here.
Sorry. Guess I should have another cup of coffee.
So, Monica, I didn't want to discuss in the executive session, is that on, um, the consent?
Yes.
It is. Thank you. All right, uh, the following minutes on the agenda, uh, for acceptance. January 2nd, 2024, reorg meeting. January 16th, 2024, special meeting. January 16th, executive session. January 22nd, 2024, regular meeting. Are there any comments or corrections? No? Can I have a motion to accept the meetings, uh, the meeting minutes as typed?
Second.
Ball on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The department monthly reports have been received and distributed to council. Once they are accepted, they can be found on the borough website within the meeting documents. Can I have a motion to accept the file and monthly department reports?
Motion to accept and file the monthly reports?
Ball on favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. Will the clerk please read ordinance 24-1530 by title only?
Ordinance to fix and amend salaries and wages for various Milltown Borough employees and providing the manner of payment thereof.
Will the council make a motion to second approve?
I make a motion that the ordinance be, uh, I always mess up with the ordinance one, but adopted on second reading.
No, first reading.
On first reading.
Introduced.
All right, fill in the blanks for me.
We need a motion to accept it as introduced with a public hearing to be held on February 26, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
May I have a, a roll, please?
Council President Revolinsky.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Menko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Uh, public hearing on this ordinance will take place on February 26, 2024 at 7:00 PM, council chambers. All right. Public hearing on, on second reading ordinance. Will the following ordinance be introduced on January 22nd, 2024 and advertised according to law? If any member of the public wishes to comment on this ordinance, they may do so after the reading. Will the clerk please read ordinance 24-1529 by title?
Ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a CAFBANK.
Will the council please make a, a motion?
I move that ordinance 24-1529 be adopted on first reading, published.
Second reading.
Second reading, sorry. Uh, okay. And final reading and be published according to law.
We need a second.
Second.
I will now open the public hearing on ordinance 24-1529. Is there any? No? Public hearing is now closed. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Revolinsky.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Menko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Authorizing bill payment. Will the clerk please read resolution for payment of obligations?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $3,517,222 and 8 cents.
You have heard this reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that this bill is be approved as typed.
Second.
The, uh, resolution was approved by Councilman Potter, seconded by Council President Revolinsky. Will the clerk please?
Any questions?
Oh.
I, I just had a question on page seven and I think 18. It says, we're paying $66 to remove a refrigerator? Is that right?
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Seven.
That is accurate.
So for the, uh, the CFC removal.
Oh, as you CFC remove, okay.
Yeah, sir, it's not the removal of the refrigerator itself, it's the, it's a hazardous waste, so you gotta take it to the dump, do all that.
Thanks. On page 18, I have one question. Let's see, maybe it's, maybe it's. Says the senior center, it had fiber invoice, that it, is it a new fiber connection for the senior center or? Page 18? 472 and then it says 15, $154, but.
I don't believe so. Was it new, not a new connection, right?
It says senior. 472? Was that with software maintenance? It's all hot for software.
So, so I'll dig that PO out and, uh.
Okay.
Other than try to guess whether or not, I don't think it's just software maintenance, uh, it's probably just what the IT guys call it, could be a laptop, a computer itself, but we'll sort that out and, uh, tell the council what it is.
Okay, thank you.
I, um, I'd just like to add also, I know Councilman Zambrana wanted to look at, uh, the bills, uh, this week, um, or in preparation for this meeting, uh, as did the mayor and myself, and, uh, what we'd like to do is institute, uh, scanning of these bills on a regular basis and have those sent out to all the council members, so that they have an opportunity to review and ask questions prior to, um, just getting the bill list the week before the meeting. Hopefully that helps solve some of the questions that, that come up.
And, and Council President Revolinsky, the reason for that is so it's more detailed, so we don't have to.
Yes.
Ask these questions to our, to our DA, so. We still can ask the questions, at least we'll have more information.
And then this way, we're not stuck with one person has and someone else does.
Correct. But since that's still in question, are we still able to approve this? Or do we have to hold, what, what is that, does that one thing hold up the, uh, the bill?
No.
No, sir.
No.
So we've, so in the bill list, the money's already been obligated and paid. It's not, not paid, it's just waiting for the council to review it and understand it. We've already, uh, what we don't have right now is an explanation of what the money was spent for, not that it, not, not that it did not go through, purchase order requisition was appropriately done. I just don't, I just can't specifically say what it was, but it's no reason that you can't pull it. If you, if you, if you're uncomfortable, you can't pull that from the bill list, we'll hold that check until later time.
Councilman Collins, you?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Do you want to pull it, or do you want to?
No. No, we'll, we'll prove it. We just want to take a look at, see what it is.
Answer.
Okay. Roll, um, clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Revolinsky.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Menko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and if so removed, will be treated on a separate matter. Any items require an expenditure or supported by the certification of funds. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution by number and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. We actually have letters.
Yeah, it was letters today, only because I wasn't sure if there was gonna be action after executive.
Yes.
They'll be numbered after the meeting. Yes, so just, let me know the letter.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor and Monica, I'm gonna pull, uh, item J.
Is that it?
Yeah, I'd like to put, pull, uh, item L.
So far we had two? Okay. All right. Will the clerk please read resolution requested?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain cer, certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at its February 12th, 2024 regular meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, Resolutions A through I and K and M, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect, as though each were read in its entirety at the February 12th, 2024, regular meeting adopted by separate vote.
You heard the reading of the consent resolution, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion that these resolutions be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Potter.
He's nick on the trigger.
Second by Council President Revolinsky. Will the clerk please, uh, call the roll?
Council President Revolinsky.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Menko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Will the clerk read Resolution L?
Uh, Jag. Jag.
J, by title, please?
Granting permission to the Milltown Fourth of July Organization Incorporated to hold the annual Fourth of July activities.
What's the pleasure, council?
Remove that this resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion made by Council President Revolinsky, seconded by, uh, Councilman Collins.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. The reason why I pulled it, not because I do not want the Milltown Fourth of July, I do, but only because I'm on the, on the executive committee and I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
So, that's the only reason why I pulled it.
All right, uh, can we have a roll to approve?
Council President Revolinsky.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Menko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski. Councilman Potter.
Abstain.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Okay. Clerk, please read Resolution, uh, L by title.
Authorizing Personnel Action Municipal Court.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Remove that this resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion made by Council President Revolinsky, seconded by Councilman Potter. Clerk, please call the roll.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion.
Uh, I just say, quite, was this a full-time job, we're going to two part-timers, or?
Uh, this is because in the court, do you want to?
So these are two on-call, part-time clerks. That's why their rate is that, so, for vacancies in the court, as, as the council knows, we don't, we have neither a court administrator or a deputy. We're trying to hire a deputy and find a shared services perhaps with a court administrator for the court itself. It's being currently run by the Middlesex County Visage. Saw the gentleman here works, and these are the, sort of the on-call people that they bring in to take up the slack and do the work when the other people aren't available.
I see. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, will clerk please call the roll?
Council President Revolinsky.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Menko.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski. Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Reports from the officials. Council President Revolinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, very brief, we, uh, we did have personnel committee, uh, meetings this week on, on Tuesday, discussed several matters, including the ordinance that was, uh, introduced this evening for fixing the salaries and wages. Uh, part of that did bring up the salaries to be at least minimum wage and bring a couple others up to par. We, uh, Ford Avenue, uh, was canceled this, this month, there was no meeting. I know they're still interviewing or going through the resumes for the executive director position, and last but not least, the planning board meeting was also canceled for this month with no applicants to be heard. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Milltown Lightpick Utility, February 12th, 2024. A new span of secondary conductors was installed on North Main Street to facilitate a permanent service connection for a dwelling. Existing circuit was balanced between. Better between two existing transformers in the area. Department members responded through sparking wires on West Foshee Avenue and repaired a service drop cable. Linemen responded to, uh, eight calls for broken streetlights, six lights were repaired, two were replaced with energy-efficient LED fixtures. One broken electric meter was replaced, abandoned telco cable wires were removed from several poles. Department members responded to several calls of downed wires. Line clearance was performed on North Main Street, Columbia Avenue, North Moats, Maple Shade Road. Our aggressive line clearance has been resulted in fewer outages. Bucket truck number nine delivered hydraulic prob, wait a minute, excuse me. Bucket truck number nine has developed hydraulic problems and is out of service. The borough's four diesel generators were inspected and treated by utility department members. Substation maintenance was performed, all filters were changed, and the four HVAC units and batteries were checked for DC backup control system. Various power problems were evaluated throughout the borough. Utility department worked with the billing department to troubleshoot disputes between, throughout the month. Poll surveys related to two poles with structural issues. Work will be scheduled as soon as markouts are completed. And the water utility monitoring of the pump station occurs on regular schedule. Church Street Pump Station Number One is out for repairs. Water main break on Crestwood Drive was repaired and the hydrant valve for hydrant was replaced. If anyone has any questions, oh, excuse me, if anyone isn't signed up to receive notices through the Nixle email and text, please go to nixle.com to register. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Menko?
So, uh, as I spoke with, uh, the Parks and Recreation and some of the other, we're still looking to do, uh, Earth Day the week before, uh, Earth Day, just so we don't conflict with Rutgers and their Rutgers Day. So on the 20th is when it's expected all to go through. There'll be cleanups, uh, there seems to be, uh, some interest in doing the kayaking things, that may happen that day as well. But there'll be more forthcoming about that. The rep department had a really good response to their, uh, presentation of the new theater, uh, group that they're doing, which it also seems got a good response, that they've immediately got people to sign up. But additionally, there's a lot more interest in less sports and some things that are just for other people who aren't sports-worthy. With that, uh, I know the Green Team, we're looking, is, we have a meeting, uh, early later this week. Uh, I know, uh, we're probably going to do that as a Zoom, but if anyone is interested, uh, I can certainly get them notes when that happens. Beyond that, uh, some of the other things just to mention, uh, the, the rep department still has tickets left for the Milltown Night with the New Jersey Devils. Uh, the game will be on Tuesday, April 9th, and, uh, you could purchase some, it's a private box, you do have to make your way there. Um, the open, uh, registration is now open for the sports soccer clinics program, which begins on March 7th. Uh, there are some, also some new exploring programs for the Theater Arts Company, and those still have some openings. And they are also looking for seasonal employment applications for the Albert App Camp and the Borough Pool. Applications are located on the borough website, and, uh, the applications must be completed online and emailed to the rep department. Uh, you can use Community Pass or any one of those programs. The library also has, uh, a bunch of happenings like they do. Saturday, the 17th, at 11:00, they are crocheting with Sam G. Wednesday, the 21st, uh, at 11:00 AM, they have a drop-in craft. Wednesday, the 21st, uh, at 11:00 a.m., they have a drop-in craft. They come in, they'll make, and you're going to learn how to make craft that day. Uh, Storytime Thursdays, uh, 10:30 a.m., uh, babes and tots at 11:30 a.m. for all ages. Saturday, the 24th, they have book art for babes. Sign-up is required. Uh, Saturday, February 24th at noon, What's Up With Cannabis? Kind of an interesting thing that I wouldn't have expected to have there. It says, here the latest and get your questions answered by Rob Mahia, a cannabis professor from Stockton University. Uh, Monday, the 26th at 10:30, there's a heart and health screening there presented by Breathe &amp; Health. Uh, Monday, the February 26th at 6:00 p.m., there is Jeopardy Night for teens and adults, and the library will be closed on Monday, February 19th. In honor of the President's Day.
Thank you, Councilman Menko. Councilman Pozzanski?
Sure. Uh, this is the DPW report. Uh, street sweeping has taken place and is ongoing to meet DEP regulations. The quarterly catch basins and outfall pipe cleaning has taken place to meet the DEP stormwater regulations also. STF continue to address any potholes that need to be repaired. Please use the report of concern feature on the Borough webpage to report any new potholes. Cleanup of bamboo, downed trees and vegetation at the Schwendeman Cabin continues. Fallen tree on Highland Drive was removed. Installed remaining public parking signs on Main Street and at Midshlin Field. Leaf cleanup continues at the pool. Fifty-five hydrant markers have been installed throughout the town. Leaf cleanup at Borough Park has been completed. Um, Schwendeman, uh, area, if anyone goes by, uh, you'll enjoy it, uh, you'll see that things are happening over there. And also at the old DPW, please drive by. It, it looks better every day. The guys have been working on it. And, uh, I also have a report from the senior center, the update. Following activities take place each week at the Milltown Senior Center. Uh, the activities are run through the Office of Aging for those 16 and over. Some of the activities include aerobics, line dancing aerobics, uh, chair yoga, billiards, uh, walk aerobics men's club, chorus, Spanish arts, crafts, bingo, and a monthly visit from the VNA nurse and sweating with the oldies. Um, oh, okay. Um, and also, I'll, I'll also give you the highlights. Lunch and Learn on Wednesday, February 14th at 1:30 presented by the Excelsior Group. Uh, sign-up required. Bus trips to Portuguese Fisherman on Tuesday, February 13th, um, depends if it snows or not, I guess. Uh, the VNA nurse will be there on the 20th of February. Q and A presentations from Monica, the Borough Clerk, on February 22nd, and a Q and A presentation from Ralph, the supervisor, DPW, on, uh, February 29th at 12:30. And, uh, for the Historic Preservation Committee, first meeting was January 25th via Zoom. 2024 officers were appointed. Uh, there'll be two in-person meetings, March 28th and September 26th. The next meeting is February 22nd via Zoom. Link on the Borough website calendar. And that concludes.
Thank you, Councilman Pozzanski. Councilman Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, regarding public safety, uh, from the Milltown Police Department, speeding concerns. The police department have stepped up speeding enforcement throughout the borough. Please continue to obey all local speed limits. For solicitor permits, there are currently no individuals who have been issued solicitor permits by the borough through the police department. Each solicitor must pay a fee and go through a criminal background check. When in doubt, please call the police and do not become a victim of a scam. Regarding hiring, the police department is currently accepting applications for crossing guards and public safety telecommunicators. If interested, applications for both positions can be found on the Borough website. For more information, please contact Lieutenant Carmen Di Lorenzo at cdi Lorenzo at milltownpd.org. Finally, the Milltown Police Department are very happy to help our community with any problem. As a reminder, for emergencies and life-threatening situations, please dial 911. All non-emergent situations, please dial 732-828-1100, or enter a report of concern on the official Borough website. And also with the possibility of a snowstorm coming tomorrow, please adhere to the NICSIL that came out this morning. For the Milltown Fire Department, there were 25 calls for the month of January, and one notably was the warehouse structure fire off Nassau Street in North Brunswick. Uh, we, as a mayor and council, want to personally thank all of our fire rescue workers that assisted in that alarming incident, which, thank goodness, resulted in no injuries. Uh, members are needed. Any candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse on Monday nights at 6:30, or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. For the Milltown Rescue Squad, the Milltown Rescue Squad will be accepting applications for their spring onboarding process. Anyone who is interested in learning more about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment@milltownrescuesquad.org to learn more. Applications for the April 2024 submission date need to be submitted by March 10th. Please feel free to contact the Milltown Rescue Squad for any questions. And, Mr. Mayor, regarding the Public Safety Committee, the Public Safety Committee met with the Milltown Fire Department on January 22nd, Milltown Rescue Squad on January 29th, and the Milltown Police Department on January 31st. Discussions included the essential needs for each department and how the Public Safety Committee can assist with those needs. Finally, for the Milltown Fourth of July, with the approval of the resolution this evening, the Milltown Fourth of July Committee is happy to have our annual Fourth of July celebration once again in Milltown on Thursday, July 4th. Please keep an eye out for all upcoming fundraisers and events on our website, milltownfourthofjuly.com, and follow us on Facebook, TikTok, and Instagram. And that includes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Potter. Councilman Zambrana?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have three short reports. Uh, the first one is from the Environmental Commission. Uh, reorg meeting for 2024 was held on January 24th via Zoom, and a, uh, new chair and vice chair, uh, Chair Michael Charcarjian, and our Vice Chair Barbara Wright were chosen for 2024. Uh, the recording secretary has not been chosen yet. Uh, it's a TBD status, and, and that will be handled by a combination of myself and Mr. Charcarjian until a, uh, recording secretary is chosen. Um, I was asked to, um, ask the Finance Committee or reach out to the Finance Committee if there is any details that, um, the committee could provide to the Finance Committee for a budget ask for helping Earth Day. Uh, I was also asked to reach out to the Finance Committee since it's that time of the year, budget prep, um, about what, how much money is left from the, um, Schwendeman grant, uh, a few years ago, um, so that we could, that can be reported back to the Commission at the next meeting. And, um, Mary Ellen Schwendeman, who attended the meeting, did, did ask about if there's going to be any sort of, um, movement towards, uh, upgrading or, 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 to that property of, uh, by Q3 of this year, as, um, she would actually asked about, uh, switching artifacts from the Schwendeman, uh, property on Main Street to that, uh, to the Schwendeman property right now. Um, Board of Health, uh, reorg meeting was canceled due to a lack of a quorum, and our next meeting will be held on February 27th, 2024 in Borough Hall at 7:30. My last, uh, update is, is about the Revitalization Committee. Uh, that reorg meeting was held on February 9th via Zoom. Uh, a chair, the same chair from last year, Andrea Van Devere, was chosen, and new committee members were introduced and welcomed. Uh, the next meeting is actually tomorrow, February 13th at 7:00 p.m., at 7:30 p.m., which is a new time, and will be via Zoom, and that completes my reports.
Thank you, Councilman Zambrana. Uh, my report is pretty quick and simple. Uh, we've actually, we had a personnel committee, uh, meeting, and we discussed the background checks for all new borough employees being hired, so we're going to, uh, implement that uh, as part of our process for, uh, the borough. That concludes my report. Uh, reports from any borough professionals? Nothing further, sir.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
I have a couple of things. Uh, so, in January, the Clerk's Office issued 244 dog licenses and three cat licenses. The $5 late fee went into effect February 1st. A reminder that the rabies needs to be good through October 31st. Again, not our rule, that is the state's rule. Uh, today, we sent out letters to owners on file that have not renewed their dog license in a few years. I know through COVID, it kind of fell through the cracks for some people. I don't, we're not sure if people have moved out of town, or if their pet has, uh, passed away. So, we did send out a courtesy letter just reminding everyone, hey, we haven't gotten a licensed renewal from you in a while. Please give us a call and let us know if you've moved, or if your pet is deceased, or if you forgot and you want to be licensed. Um, I've been getting a few submissions for raffle licenses, and just a quick reminder to everybody that when you submit it, it needs to be four copies of the application. I don't care if most of the application is copied, but that last page must be signed by two members of the organization in ink and notarized. That cannot be a copy. Um, and a good idea is to submit at least one month prior to when you plan on holding your raffle or bingo, because the state can be a little slow. Uh, any resident who's been appointed to a border committee at reorg or after that should be coming to my office to complete an oath of office, as well as update personal information. I'm trying to create a database of our volunteers. Uh, the 2024 Lewis Bay Second, the Second Future Municipal Leader Scholarship Competition Application has been posted to the Borough website. If you go onto our website under Community, then Education, then Scholarship Opportunities, you will see all the information there. It's open to all high school juniors and seniors regardless of where you go to school, but you must apply within the municipality that you reside in. The deadline to get the submission to our office is March 8th, 2024, it's a Friday. All submissions come to the Clerk's Office, and then they are forwarded to Mayor and Council for review. At that point, they choose a semifinalist, which gets sent to the League of Municipalities for consideration. Uh, election date deadlines, March 25th is the deadline for anybody who's planning on filing a petition for the primary. April 10th is the deadline if you want to change your party affiliation. May 14th is the deadline to register to vote. May 28th is the deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot. Early voting for the primary election will be May 29th through June 2nd, and once I have all those locations, it'll be posted on the Clerk's website. June 4th is primary election day, and as I always say, poll workers are needed. You do receive paid training, and for that day, if you work a full day, it's $400. If you are interested in being a poll worker, please contact me in the Clerk's Office, 732-828-2100, extension 119, or you can email me, morlando@milltownborough.com. And finally, as Councilman Pozzanski said, I will be at the Senior Center on Thursday, February 22nd at 12:30 for a little Q and A. Um, and that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Does any member, old business, does any member of council have any old business to bring forward, Council?
I have, uh, I have two quick items. Uh, and then I'd like to actually address, uh, Councilman Zambrana's comments regarding the Environmental Commission. The first, for old business, and I'll shoot this question towards the clerk, where are we with, uh, posting the sale of surplus equipment? Uh, last year, I believe it was in October or September, we had compiled a list, passed resolution to sell those items. I know we were still waiting on a couple of VIN numbers, or, um...
I have all that. Um, the pictures I'm going through to make sure that it's everything, that every side and the inside, everything else, so, uh, by the end of this month, everything should be posted.
Okay. Uh, and the reason I bring that up is because today I was, uh, stopping down at Borough Hall, and, um, Councilman Pozzanski didn't mention, but I know he wanted to, was the tremendous work that the DPW crew has been doing over at the old electric substation. And, uh, you didn't, I...
But you didn't say...
I apologize, I didn't hear you say, um, but they're doing the work at the DPW and electric substation. If you do drive by or walk by, you'll notice things are a lot more clean over there, um, just taking one step forward to hopefully turning that into a park one day, and, you know, there are also doing, I know Gary mentioned it as well, the, um, the work over there at the Schwendeman Cabin. Um, Schwendeman Cabin is a little bit of old business. Um, at this time, we did have correspondence going back and forth with the architect. Um, the architect had indicated that prior, uh, when he, when he submitted his...
Proposal.
Proposal, thank you. Um, he anticipated there being some architectural floor plans, and for him to do a proper report on the condition of the facility, uh, he did state that he anticipates another 16 hours or 16 to 20 hours of work to draw out that floor plan. I did speak with, uh, Mayor Murray today. He indicated that at one point he had drawn up floor plans in AutoCAD, which is, uh, tremendous help, so we're going to pass those over to the architect, but, uh, that architect is being paid out of the grant that we received for the property. Other than his fees, which have not been spent yet, uh, no additional monies had been spent other than a couple of nickels and dimes on materials for treating the wood. Uh, the rest of the grant still does remain, so there should be around $102,000 if I recall correctly. Um, with the additional hours, that would bring the architect's fee to somewhere in the neighborhood of $6,000 to $7,000 to do the assessment report, uh, which would include, uh, indications of the status of the electric, the plumbing, the HVAC, uh, all those nuances of both the cabin and the addition. Um, he did ask that we discuss this. I thought it would be a good time to bring it up so we can get all of council's feedback on this, um, if we are okay with just letting him know that, yes, that, that's okay for the additional hours in order to generate a proper report for the floor plans.
Uh, I'll just need a, a motion in a second because it is expending more money, so...
Sure. And that monies would come out of the grant, so...
Yeah. I mean, I can put it on the next meeting or if you're doing it now, I don't know how...
I, I think it'd be in our best interest to move forward sooner rather than later, um, with that, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, acknowledge the additional expenditures of the architect.
Can we call it a not to exceed of 7,500?
Not to exceed 7,500 for that report.
I'll second it.
5,500 is what it was, this is another 2,000.
I'll second it.
All right, so I'm sorry, who gave the motion?
That was me, and then seconded by Councilman Collins.
All right, and this is to go from not to exceed a 5,500 to a not to exceed of 7,500, just so everybody knows what we're voting on.
Please call the roll.
Council President Revolinski.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Menko.
Aye.
Councilman Pozzanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana.
Aye.
Is there any more old business?
Yes. Um, I'd like to know if we can revisit the agreement that we have with North Brun, North Brunswick in regards to the use of our cord system. It, it's been a couple of years, and they're redoing their building because they've had some other issues, and I, I'd like to see if we can, um, go over the, the agreement at some point.
It's my understanding that we don't have a formal agreement in place, but, uh, but, yeah, this has, this has been brought up a little bit that we need to do something finally, that's been a year and a half.
Yeah.
With the anticipated further delays going out there, so I think it's time to formalize something.
We're getting, uh, wear and tear on our building and our facility, so I think, yeah, I think it's a fair assessment.
So, Council President Revolinski, who would be in charge? Would that be the BA, or?
Well, I, I think the letter would go out from the business, from our business administrator to their business administrator stating that we'd like to address this matter and formalize it, um, and then we'll take the discussions from there. Um, what department would handle that? I would, I would assume it's somewhere in the realm of DPW and Finance, um, along with the BA. Since our business administrator is silent, I'll take that as he accepts the additional work.
Well, first, we'll have to find the existing, non-existing agreement to start with, and we'll go from there. Yes, sir.
There you go. Uh, any more old business?
No.
New business? Does any member of council have any new business to bring before council?
Uh, just, just one, uh, for me, and I'm sorry if I was looking down, I don't see any other hands come up.
There's two items that you had me add to the agenda.
Pardon?
You had me add two items to new business on?
Yes. Sorry, I, I have another one that I have on here that, uh, comes up, this one's from last year, so anyone who was on council last year may recall that we had discussions about, uh, food truck and, uh, and/or farm stand ordinance. And if it's, uh, I believe that at the time, the, the council members who were up here last year were all in favor of moving forward with something of that. Um, I just want to make sure that we're all still kind of in that, uh, in that mindset, and we can get some direction over to our Borough Count, or Borough Attorney, uh, to start drafting up an ordinance for this.
Yeah, I believe, Pete, Peter, we, uh, we decided to go with one option and, you know...
I, I just need to know what it is you're contemplating, if you guys want to try to, maybe by next meeting, have some, you know, idea of what you want to do and how you want to do it. Um, you know, parameters like, you know, one-day week, in the afternoon, you know, from this period to this period in this location. I know there was some talk about perhaps doing it in the parking lot at Borough Hall on Fridays, uh, during the periods when, uh, Borough Hall closes, uh, due to summer hours. So, but, you know, certainly you need a location, uh, and you need to know when you want to do it. If you want to give me some of that information, we can then work from there.
Sure thing. And then, other than that, we have the two that are listed here on the, uh, on the minutes here, or the agenda for this evening, um, a discussion on single-sided parking for JFK Drive between Violet Terrace and Carina Drive. Um, this came about as a suggestion from last year when PSCNG was doing all their work. Uh, we had a couple accidents in that intersection. As, as many folks know, that during school hours, it becomes very congested, and you really can't drive through the intersection because folks are parking on both the northbound can't drive through the intersection because folks are parking on both the northbound and southbound side of JFK Drive. And you've got traffic trying to go both ways. And when you have vehicles on either side, there's enough room for one car to get through. So instead of rushing and trying to beat that traffic and get past... Sorry. We figured it would be safer to have single-sided parking over there. We were going to take some direction from the police department on what side that should be, but we really contemplated between the hours of, say, 2:30 and 3:30 PM, which really happens to be the only time that there's parking on both sides of the road that create some sort of hazard.
Actually, I spoke with Chief Johnson about this, and his recommendation was, as far as the one side, have it on the right side as you're going toward, I guess, the Home Depot, having the right side of the...
Southbound.
Southbound side, because that's, because then you don't have to worry about people crossing the street. And I mean, even though you have the crossing guard there. And he also mentioned drop-off and pick-up hours.
Oh, yes, I apologize.
On school days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So 7:30 to 8:30 in the mornings, as well as 2:30 and 3:30, in that range, in the afternoon. And if everyone is okay with that on council, we'll just proceed forward and hopefully have, whether it's a resolution or an introduction of an ordinance for the next meeting.
That would be an ordinance.
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 Yeah.
Which I'll get the ordinance introduction statement right by then, I promise.
Peter, if you need any other information, we can...
Yeah, I think I have what I need to put it together, so... Thank you.
So has that been communicated or shared with the Board of Education?
No.
Just wondering.
No, not yet.
Okay.
And then, and then the last item that we have on here was a discussion that came up initially for the improvements to Albert Avenue Park. We were looking at doing a bond ordinance for those in discussions with our DPW director. Last week, he made me aware of a county open space grant, which apparently does not require matching funds, but that it is, in fact, just a grant for either $500,000 per year or you can do 1.5 million, but then you can only use that for three-year term. You can't apply for anything the following year. As we heard from the numbers that were provided to us tonight, that kind of fits nicely with the improvements for Albert Avenue. So Ralph did submit a letter of intent to the county saying that we were discussing it and would like to apply for that grant. That should give us a list. They should then, in turn, provide us with some information via resolution or what we have to include in the resolution and all the other aspects. So we look forward to hearing from them over the next week or so, and hopefully by the February 26th meeting. And that's all we have, or I have, for new business.
Can I, with this parking ordinance, do we have to send out notices to the people on that street before we do it? Like, does that mean...
You can.
But we're not obligated to?
I don't know that there's any obligation when you're creating police restrictions on the street to do that.
Okay.
Do we have to paint the curb lines?
Probably not if you're going to just make it, if you're going to put signage up, but you're not going to paint the curbs because you're going to have parking there some of the time.
Okay. Thank you.
I would say it's actually a good suggestion.
Yeah.
So I think when we do the introduction, at that point, like, we should probably notify the public.
But we can just do flyers. We don't have to do official certified notification. That's all. I just need to know what I want to do.
Sure.
It's close to my house. I'll even deliver them personally.
And I'm sure that the police will do it too when they're out there.
Okay. Any more new business?
No.
Okay. Open to the public. The public comment portion of the meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns and comments, or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not too structured as a question-answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when coming to the podium. So I just want to be mindful, you know, we have a large group. Just be respectful of everybody's thoughts in here, please.
I'm Mary Mary. My name is Judy Scala, 56 South Main Street. Hello, Mayor, Council, Borough Attorney, Clerk. I come to you, I've lived in my house for, I'm going on 50 years. At one point, I lived across three taverns, the Spirit, the Lion, the Miltown Tavern. Never a problem. Lately, St. Paul's, which I was a member of St. Paul's for 23 years, has started renting out their hall. It is out of control. I went to the minister on December 10th and told him that 2:05 in the morning, this cannot be. It just can't. It's out of control. He said he was sorry and that he would take care of it. Well, the next week, it happened, continued to happen. So I felt so bad, because I was a member of the church, that I had to phone the police because I think at 1 o'clock in the morning is too much. So then I let the minister know that it was I that phoned the police because I felt so guilty calling the police on my church. And he got a little irate with me and really hurt me with his statement that, I'm not going to say the whole statement, but more or less that I could keep on calling the police, all the neighbors could call the police, he's going to rent this hall. And I was really hurt by that. And then a few weeks later, I received a note from him, which I acknowledged, and he more or less apologized for hurting me, or it was not his intent. So then I said, "I think I'd better go to the consistory." I did speak to the president, who was very kind, but nothing came about. He went through the list of everything that was going to happen, and there's more parties, more bands. Then I talked to two other members, because nobody could tell me what was the time slot that these parties were being booked. Everybody, the president of the consistory and two other members told me they never saw the contract. They did not know. But this cannot happen. Keep on going. It's not good for my health. I have an illness, I have Parkinson's. And this stress and going on to 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, it's just so out of control. And plus, I don't even think that area is zoned commercial. I know I am. I'm commercial and residential on the main. But I think where the school is, is zoned residential. And I really never wanted to ever in my life come here and talk to you guys, but this has to be solved. So I asked you for your help. I don't know how this could be resolved. I tried very hard to work with members of the church, but I'm getting nowhere. And for my own health, I'm asking you guys for help.
If, I could just step in for a second, Ms. Scala?
Okay.
So I know that the code enforcement officer's been aware of the situation, and there's been some investigation into the use of the property. And it's my understanding also that a summons is issued for their use. And presently, because of that, I'm going to advise my mayor and council not to respond and let that follow through on its course. But that's currently what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. And I also want to say a big thank you to your police department.
Absolutely.
If it wasn't for them coming out and telling them to lower the music or cut the music, and I really appreciate all their help. They're a wonderful department. Thank you, and I, thank you kindly. I hope you can help me.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
I can respond to all that. My name's Dave Hastings. I live at 60 North Wilson Ave. I had some remarks prepared, and I think I'm just going to stick to it. I just want to speak briefly about this issue. I'm the president of the consistory at St. Paul's. You know, when it first came up, it was a noise ordinance issue. Excuse me. So I spoke to Judy and Rich a number of times and tried to convey to them that, we didn't even know about the 10 o'clock noise ordinance first, but we were really going to make an effort to make people stick to it. We changed our rental agreement. We put signs up. I ended up speaking to Lieutenant Di Lorenzo and Chief Johnson, who were both great, particularly the chief. I was very supportive. He said, "Look, you know, it is 10 o'clock. We have to respond, but, you know, we're all part of the community here. We want to work together." And I was hoping that would help solve the issue. That I was told that a resident came and questioned the zoning, you know, of the building in the back. If you're not familiar, there's the church in front, the parsonage, and then behind that's our education building and social hall. So I reached out to the zoning official. He got back to me a couple of days later and said that was, he thought it was R6, and we were in violation of it. So I tried to get a little more information. We spoke to an attorney about it. He didn't have a lot of information, but his estimate was between $15,000 and $20,000 to apply for the variance, not terms of that we can afford or even want to do. So I then called the zoning officer back. I spoke to the township attorney. In an effort to save us a little money, if they had any of the original surveys, permits, variances or allowances that were put out when the building was built, I learned some things about non-conforming, pre-existing use. So we were trying to get some answers on that. They both told me that any paperwork like that was in a box somewhere, and they weren't going to look for it. So we'd have to hire an attorney and kind of go from there. I also asked if we could have a little time to just kind of investigate this a little bit, and I was told no. So the zoning officer called me early last week and wanted to know about the variance. I said, "At this point, I think we're just going to have to stop renting the hall. We don't have the time and the money for variance that we may or may not get, or there would be restrictions that, you know, would make it not feasible to rent it anyway." So I sent him a schedule. I did ask if we could continue through, I think it's the first weekend in March, because we had a few parties booked and stuff to call people last minute. They have catering and, you know, invitations out. So could we get just a little time to finish those? And from then on, we would not rent the hall out anymore. And then he called me today and said he's issuing the summons. I was just kind of disappointed and a little surprised that the response from the borough was no, and just kind of closed the door, and that was it. And just so there's no misunderstanding, we're not trying to set up a business. We're not trying to run a big business. There was bands there one night. As I told the mayor, the zoning official, and the chief of police, we made the wrong call on that, and it's not going to happen again. So we're not looking to be a music venue. Excuse me. So I just wanted to make sure there's no misunderstanding about that. And just real quick, St. Paul's, we just celebrated our 150th anniversary as part of Miltown. Our mission statement as a church is to bring Jesus' love to the heart of the community. And how do you do that? I think the first thing you do is be open and welcome to anyone who walks through those doors. You donate time and space to various groups, AA, NA, the Interfaith Network of Care. When the Methodist Church dropped the Boy Scout charter, we took it over. We donate space to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. There's a special kids and autism group. We're donating space for a fundraiser for lymphoma. We run a small food bank for some local families that struggle. Every week or two, they come, pick up a couple of bags of groceries. We have a youth group for young kids. You don't have to be a member of the church. Any local kids are welcome to come. My son has brought some friends, and a couple of those families ended up joining the church. A number of years ago, the board decided to make ours a tithing church. So every month, a percent of our income goes to a worthy cause. I know once a year, we try and hit the Miltown PBA, the Fire Department, the Rescue Squad, the American Legion. We've donated to women's shelters, food banks, things like that. Excuse me, I can't kick this off. I've had it for a month. And the unfortunate reality is there's a financial component to all this. If you read and do a little research, you'll see churches across the country, across denominations, are struggling. People just don't attend and give the way they did 20, 30, 40 years ago. And we're hoping renting that hall could make up some of the losses that we've had. So I think we're just going to not rent the hall. We don't have the money, or I don't think we want to have that fight with the town or with the residents that are affected. We feel bad about that. I do want to just say, we're going to continue our work in Miltown. The people here that came with me and other people at the church, I know are going to keep giving their time, their energy, their money for all the work we do. And just on a personal note, I'm so proud to be a part of this team and a part of the St. Paul's family. It's been a blessing in my life, and it's been a lot to me and my family. Thank you.
Richard Ryan, 60 South Main Street, Mr. Mayor, council members, everybody. Everything that's been said so far is absolutely true. Judy's comments, absolutely 100% true. I wouldn't say it if it weren't true. The problem that still exists, however, is that once it was determined, if it was determined by mayor and council that the use is a non-approved accessory use, I don't see how a decision can be made to allow it to continue. I say that now, even though there's an effort clearly to change that aggressive use, because what's also true is that though there was dialogue between residents and members about certain steps that would be taken, they were not taken. Specifically, the initial response we received was that if we were to notify them about the noise issues, then they would deal with it. Only they did not. So we found ourselves in a position where I had predicted, when I had my conversation with the pastor, that that would happen if we had no other recourse. So I say that because even though this sounds like good news to me, frankly, I don't have much faith in the fact that they will adhere to that. And though I am somewhat sympathetic to situations where people have put money forward, and there are some constraints in that, whether it's the ability to notify caterers or others, the business of the church should not become a hardship for the neighbors and residents that exist there. So essentially, we're being asked to continue for a short time or a longer period of time, whatever the case may be, to absorb that hardship so that the people they rented to don't have to. I understand your point of view, though I disagree with it. So again, it goes to the fact that we were told certain steps would be taken. Notify the pastor. It happened over the course of several events on the same weekend, and he was tired of the phone calls right away. So then we were getting no response, no choice but to call the police. We were told that steps would be taken, that a member of the consistory would then assume that role and would in fact be on-site for every event at 9:30 to ensure that the noise level began to diminish and that the party would break up. To the best of my knowledge, that did not happen. If it did, I would think that those conversations would have taken place with the police department on the many occasions where we had to call them. There was some talk about the additional parking that's used behind the school and its aggressive nature, and that steps would be taken to ensure that wasn't happening any longer because that backs right up to our properties. So I say I don't have much faith that they will follow through because we haven't seen that take place as yet. So it comes down to just a few things for me, right? Can you, as a governing body, allow the use? Can you, as a governing body, allow the use? Not for one more event, not for four more events, or eight, for any. I don't know that you have that ability. And if advised by council, then, you know, I could look at a different one. I don't think that step has been taken. I was going to ask originally for an update this evening, but we've received some information here, and so I don't really have to do that. But while we consider collectively everything that's on the floor here, I want to also point out that I think it's prudent that mayor and council and the borough attorney and zoning official take the step to determine whether or not the parking behind that school is even legal, because I don't think it is. And I'm not even certain that's the property of St. Paul's Church. I think somebody should look at a survey and make the determination whether it's their property or not. Somebody needs to convince me that it is, because at the moment, I happen to think it's borough property. If the borough wanted to enter into an agreement and allow people to park there, then that's fine. That's their choice. So I have been encouraged by the fact that I came here and asked for some help, and it has run its course this far. I was very encouraged by my conversation with Mr. Hastings. And it was a candid, polite conversation. I was thankful for that, because that's not the reception we first received. So I think there's still many lingering issues that need to be determined before anybody can even say, sure, go ahead, have your next three or four events, and we'll call it a I respectfully offer that if that takes place, I would appreciate somebody notifying me, and in the interim, I'll wait to hear. Thanks for your time.
Just to respond to a few things to that, you know, first of all, that the property is not St. Paul's. I don't know where that comes from. Apparently, there is no survey, because the borough doesn't have one, the zoning officer doesn't have one, the borough attorney doesn't have one. I'd be interested to know if, when that comes up, if all of a sudden a survey is found. I'd just be curious as to that. We've had conversations with the police department. I've spoken to Chief Johnson. He actually invited me to his office. We sat down and talked about it. There have been, and they can get up and tell you themselves, for the battle of the bands, that was a mistake that we're not doing again. The pastor was there, and my father was there. The other parties, Dan Van der Veer's been there. So there have been people there. If you call the police at 10:01, you know, or you call them at 8:30 to tell them you're going to call them at 10:01, you know, okay, two minutes. Really, that's about it. And I just, I want to be careful here. I'm not happy with the fact that it's being applied, that maybe I'm not telling the truth. I sent the zoning off with their schedule for the next couple of weeks. I can show it to you. We have 12 events, not to take up too much of your time, but we have 12 events through February. I'm sorry, bear with me one second. So we have 12 events booked through March 10th. The weekend of the 8th, the 9th, and 10th are Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts, and Special Kids Ministry for Autism. Those are all free. We donate the space for that weekend, okay? Of those 12 events, eight are groups that we donate space to, whether it's Boy Scouts, lymphoma, a church luncheon, autism twice, a Boy Scout PAC meeting. So this is not bands playing there till 1 o'clock in the morning every Friday and Saturday night. I want to make that clear, okay? And I don't know if anybody else wanted to comment, but, and I was serious when we're not going to rent the hall anymore. I think I would appreciate it if we could continue to charter the Boy Scouts and continue to do a Tricky Trade for Lymphoma, or a Christmas party for a group of kids with autism. I don't think that's going beyond without getting into ordinances and zonings and everything else. Thanks.
I just want to, do I have to say my name again? Judy Scala. I just want to say, when it comes to the property in the back there, I don't really think it is the church, because when I moved in and my property did, in my survey, it was, if anybody here remembers Ray Kimbers, it was part of that property. It went in the back and catty corner, and a little piece of my property in the corner. You know where you have the Cub Scout truck? And then it's Pastor Matt's truck, then it's a dumpster. That one corner does not belong to the church. It belongs to the town. So I just wanted to say that. And I also wanted to say that in my heart of hearts, I never thought, Mr. Hastings, you were lying, never.
You didn't, no.
I never, ever thought that of any of you. The only problem I had was, because I was Pastor Matt's biggest cheerlead, and I think he knows that, and he deeply hurt me by his comments. And that's all I want to say. I don't want to call anybody liars. That's not me. So that's all I have to say. Good night, and thank you again for listening.
We'll go back and forth.
My name is Mike Hastings. I'm at 20 Harkins Road, been in the town for 12, 13 years now. I have a lot of good things to say about this town. I'm just going to tell you from the beginning. We bought a house on Harkins Road, Long Ranch there, 2012. We didn't move into 2013, because we spent a year redoing that house, doing a lot of stuff inside. We put a deck on the back and so on. Had to get...
Is Alan there?
There's Alan. Had to get some permits to put a roof over the deck. Alan was very helpful in providing guidance on what we should do to make sure there wasn't enough water runoff. We built a dig, put a big hole in there at his guidance. That was okay with the town. We got a permit for that. Everybody I dealt with was just extraordinarily wonderful. I mean, really helpful, friendly, willing to help, willing to do what was needed to help us welcome into the town. All the things after that. Just seeing the police around town, they're always nice, friendly, helpful. So I'll get off that. It's a wonderful town. We like it, and we like the way we react with people in the town. We like a lot of things that go on in the town here. This has been fairly stressful, and I must apologize to you guys for some of the noise that was there. It was inexcusable in my mind. But it's done. We're not going to have real loud bands there anymore, anything like that. What we would like to be able to do, regardless of what property is there, or if there's a corner of the property that's really the town, you know, I don't care about any of that stuff. I don't think any of us should really care about some of those technicalities. Whether that part of the, what we consider part of the church, our social hall, it's a separate building. To us, it's part of the church, has been for decades, I guess. And we go down there for coffee hour after church. We don't have a separate area within the church building itself. We go down to, we go down to the social hall for our coffee hour after church every Sunday. And that, I think is, I think the problem with all this is that we are looking for a way, you know, David talked about how much the church is still trying to give to the community, not even just our town, some of the things that are outside of Milltown itself. And it's a struggle. We're losing money every year. And we've been fairly successful at renting out the social hall. It's provided some pretty good income. Without that income, we're either going to go broke, or we're going to cut way, way back on expenses and services and things we do. And I don't think that's good for the town. So I just hope, I don't know exactly how it would work. I don't know if there are ordinance that needs to be changed, zoning things that need to be changed. I don't care about the technicalities of it. You guys know the technicalities of it. I would hope that all of you collectively would give us some consideration to be able to have some events there that are not going to create a lot of noise, and we shouldn't, and we won't, but that we could have events there for which we can charge. We're only charging a few hundred dollars, though it's not like we're making a huge amount of money out of it. I think it's 400 bucks, something like that. But it's income, and we need that. So I'm hoping collectively you can find a way that we could have those parties and satisfy our neighbors. We will be committed to not having noise there. I went there last night. We had a, it was a baby shower, a bunch of people there for a baby shower. I drove down there about 8:40, something like that, whenever it was halftime of the Super Bowl, probably about 8:40 or so. So I drove down that little side place, right down, down to the bottom, near where the doors are, and I couldn't hear anything. So I opened the window of my car, and I could hear the music. I had some music going on inside. I closed up the window again. I couldn't hear it. That was about 8:40 or so. I went back about 10 to 10, 5 to 10, and just to make sure that, you know, they were closing up, they were going to cut the music, even though I couldn't hear the music. I went over there, and sure enough, about one minute before 10, oop, that's it. They stopped it, and that was all there was. As I drove out, there was a police car out there. Police had been called. I don't know how it could have been that noisy. I mean, I drove down at 8:30, 8:40, I couldn't hear a thing. So I don't know what it was last night. I didn't hear anything. So I stopped to talk to him, and he said, yeah, he was called. So he was just sitting outside on the street. And I said, you hear much? He said, eh, not much. So I don't know. So honestly, I don't know what it was last night. I didn't hear anything when I went over about 8:40 or so. So whether there was something else after that, I don't know. But anyway. So I just hope that there's collectively a way we can do this, we can have some parties there, we can commit to keeping it quiet. We're all going to, we're all going to help on that, and hopefully, we can find a way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wouldn't normally do this, but Dave did. I will. I did not mean to insinuate that you lied to mayor to anybody else.
I'm sorry. I really think that.
I understand. That's why I want to address it, because I'm not certain that we could have that stuff in place.
Please, this way, please.
The fact is that we received a letter that specifically outlined steps they would take, and it's our opinion that those steps weren't followed through. That's not to say somebody is a liar. That's to say, I can't trust the situation going forward just because somebody says we're going to work with you. They've not demonstrated yet, okay? I'm not calling anybody a liar that has shared or cares to share this evening. The facts speak for themselves. And when I first came before council, I addressed the issue of how we recognize some events are different than others. But once the other determination was made, to Mr. Hastings' other point, you guys have to decide that. I don't decide that. It's yours, it's the planning board, right? If you make some sort of decision that says they're going to be allowed to do X, Y, and Z, then what's happened thus far, well, it really isn't a conversation any longer, right? I thought that it was something that should go before the planning board. If they choose not to do that, it doesn't change the fact that there's events going on, and you have to determine for me, I'm sorry, whether or not you have that authority to make that decision. And I hope you make one soon. Thank you.
I just have one less, one less thing to say. I'm sorry. But I really think the whole problem is, we've heard so many stories, so many different, it's going to be like this, it's going to be like that. I don't know, am I allowed to hand this to you guys? This is, this is my apology from the minister, plus what the rules were going to be now. And none of that came true. He said, if you want to read it, it says from 9:30, they were going to close down the music, that he talked to the police, and 10 o'clock, the place was going to clear out. None of it. None of this has happened. And I'm just tired of it. I'm very tired of it. And I tried to work with them, because they were my church, they were my church family, but I don't think they cared about me enough to help me with this. And when Mr. Hastings said he didn't hear anything, they have to remember, it's just not myself or Mr. Ryan that are calling the police. It's the surrounding neighbors, too. And last week, I had one of the police officers, I asked them to come to my home, because I thought, well, maybe it sounds different outside. And once he came in, he went, wow. It's, I should be able to enjoy a show at night in my back family room, have my little granddaughter over. It is out of control. But I'm not going to talk no more, and thank you and good night.
My name's Barbara Bright. I live at 38 Harrison Avenue. And I'm changing the subject. So, sorry. Last year, the Milltown Environmental Commission wrote a letter to the borough council about Christopher Street and our concerns about building on Christopher Street and developing Christopher Street, because it's a steep slope, and there's a lot of trees that would have to be cut down. And so since there's new members, new mayor and new council members, we just wanted to kind of update the letter, and I'll come to speak for it.
Is that the letter that you had me give to everybody in the packet?
This is the letter that we're sending exactly.
Okay. I gave it to all of them.
I'm just going to read it. Dear Mayor and Council, in December of last year, the Milltown Environmental Commission presented our concerns verbally and in writing regarding the potential development of Christopher Street. As you know, Christopher Street is a paper street that runs parallel to South Main Street, directly to the east. Christopher Street first appeared on the tax maps during the Michelin era, 1909 to 1929, in our borough. We would like to reiterate our concerns at this time and address both new and continuing members of the governing body. The Environmental Commission has had several discussions regarding Christopher Street and environs. Several members of the commission have visited the area north of Lincoln Avenue and have a good understanding of its natural features and conditions. As a commission, we'd like to express our concerns regarding the paving of this street, which has been recently proposed and would threaten its current natural status, below other reasons for... other reasons for our apprehensions. One, the area contains steep slopes which are prone to erosion as a consequence of any disturbance of trees or other vegetation. Two, removal of trees in order to develop the area would lead to water runoff issues for the surrounding homes, additional pollutants to our water system, and noise pollution for the neighboring area. As you know, mature trees enhance air and water quality. They absorb large amounts of water, which they distribute into the air via transpiration, and act as carbon sinks. Three, the wooded area is a thriving natural habitat for a variety of wild animal species. Some of the special concerns, like Cooper's hawk, and it's a stopover for varying migrating birds, such as the cedar waxwing, and many small animals make their home there. Four, as the borough is nearly completely developed, and has one of the highest levels of impervious surface in the county, forty-one percent going to record its cooperative extension in two thousand and fourteen, Christopher Street represents a substantial and important borough-owned natural area. We strongly recommend that Christopher Street be preserved as open space, permanently free from development. Our town has very limited natural wooded areas, and Christopher Street should be prioritized for preservation. In this way, the area can continue to provide critical environmental benefits, such as plant and animal habit, animal habitat, stormwater management, improved air and water quality, and noise abatement for our town. Accordingly, we urge the governing body to direct our borough professionals, attorney, planner, et cetera, to investigate the rules regarding paper streets and their protection as open space. Because I don't know how to, if there is a way to retire a paper street, how Milltown could do it, but it's probably, probably possible. So thank you for taking our concerns and recommendations regarding this important and time-sensitive issue into consideration, and that was signed by me, vice chair of the Environmental Commission.
I hear your concerns, Barbara, but I believe there's some litigation going on on Christopher Street on the building?
No. My understanding is there's an application pending before the planning board, but from a practical perspective, if it's a paper street, you have the ability, someone has the ability to improve the paper street, or alternatively, the council can vacate the street, but if it vacates the street, then it would revert back to whoever, whatever property it was created from. So, i- if the Borough Council then wanted to turn it into open space, it would probably then need to acquire the property from the people it reverted to and acquire it as open space. So, it'd be a multi-step process, and there would be a cost associated with it at the end of the day for the borough.
Would we have to go to the state for open space with that, at Green Acres?
Well, if you want it to be Green Acres property, it depends on your funding source and what you want it to be. I mean, you, certainly, the borough has the ability to acquire property for open space. It doesn't need to be Green Acres property, but if it's going to restrict it and acquire it with, with Green Acres funding, then certainly it would be.
So, just for clarity, sorry.
Let me come close to the microphone again.
No problem.
Just for clarity, just because it's a paper street doesn't necessarily mean that the borough owns it.
Well, what it means is, it was dedicated for a street at some point in the past when someone probably developed the surrounding property. It was never opened by having someone improve it to municipal standards. So if someone wanted to open that street at this point, they would need to file an application to essentially open the street as part of a development presumably, which sounds like we may have pending before our planning board. So, you know, that, that's essentially where we are.
What would we have to do to go for Green Acres funding? Would we have to apply to the state?
Most likely, yeah. It's a, you know, I don't.
So I had a question as far as a steep slope, because I had this question before. Was a survey done for the exact delineation of the steep slope? And if so, was it determined or drawn up where the steep slope begins and ends all the way through that back piece of the property?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, they, when they came up with the plan board application, they had an exhibit, excuse me, that showed the steep slopes on the property. In fact, one of the things that the board asked them to do was go back and try to adjust where the house was proposed, to try to preserve more of the steep slope than they were, than they were with the original plan. They haven't come back with that plan yet.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can just jump in as the secretary, that we actually are more than likely gonna have them restart the whole application process, because there's been such turnover in the planning board, including our, our planning board attorney. So we're just waiting to hear back from the applicant and the applicant's attorney, but it's probably gonna start all from square one.
You're gonna start the hearing again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not the application, I'm sorry. Yeah, start the hearing again, not the application. I apologize.
Just so we're.
Yes. Start the hearing again, not the application, only because there's just been such a turnover with the planning board, so.
I don't wanna take up any more of your time, but I just wanna close again. I hope that collectively, and I mean collectively with everyone, I hope collectively we can find a way that we can have some fundraisers in that social hall for the benefit of the church and the benefit of the community, and not disturb the neighbors. We're willing to work with it, we wanna work with everybody, we'll have to figure out how to do it. I hope the answer is simply not, "No, you can't do it," and that's it. I hope we can find a way to be able to do it. So, I'll just leave it at that again. Please, try to work with us. We are gonna work with everybody that we can here to try to do it the right way. We, we didn't do it the right way in the past in many instances. We admit that. It was not a good situation at some times. We're gonna correct that. But with your help, we need to correct it in a legal way. I guess the legal way would be the right way of putting it. But we're gonna do it the right way. So, let us know what we have to do if we can do something.
Lee Weisenberger, Ninety-Nine J. O.K. Drive. I'm gonna switch subjects a little. P.S.E.G., with the paving of Main Street. Heard anything?
It's gonna be in the spring.
Well, other than that, have we heard anything back? Contacting the county on curbs? You gotta get any help, assistance, or?
Well, I, or, I know Ralph reached out to the county, both regarding what they were, what their plans were for paving Main Street. They had indicated that P.S.E.G. had already pulled permits for paving Main Street, and therefore, the county wasn't doing it. We had reached out to schedule a meeting to review what streets would go curb to curb, which would only be the portion that they're required to rehabilitate, once they're done with all their pipe work, all their pipe work is done. We're still waiting on that schedule. I don't, I know an email came in this week, and I apologize, I don't have that, that date in front of me. But we are working to schedule that meeting with them, and try and coordinate things with, with our DPW, as well as with the police department, to make sure that we can mitigate the disturbance to the residents as much as possible. Ralph did also reach out regarding the curbs and sidewalks, some of the depressed or detectable warning surfaces, as they call them, the depressions at the, at the intersections for the, for the ramps and the sidewalk. I don't believe he's gotten a final answer out of them in that regard. But we are looking into how much we'll be shooting for this year for the county interlocal paving agreement, and what we can accomplish with the intersections for the detectable warning surfaces and ramps.
Right, that's, that's with that. But like you said, being, it's a main thoroughfare between towns and stuff, that, you know, to get some assistance from them to do those curves before, or, you know, get something.
Yep.
But, and then, I'm gonna go back to Mill Pond again. D snagging. Mike, once again, that process, that comes out every year or two to apply for a grant to help that?
That's correct.
Any idea when that would take place again?
They don't really give a projection when the grant programs starts. We have not heard, we keep our ears open, and we want to know what they're gonna do.
Okay. Would, from the past, though, has that amount gone up, stayed the same, basically, for the amount of the grant?
The amount of the grant? It was a range, but, so, you know, it's, obviously depends on how the state's budget's done, and if they're appropriate to the particular target.
Because as we go back in time, like you said, back in the seventies, when that pond was dredged, and that was also done below the dam, I believe, to Ryder Lane almost, probably, by the county?
Can't recall, before my time.
Well, as I said, there, there has to be a record somewhere of what took place. And I think we're at that point again now, and I refer to Spotswood, like I said, where they were gonna foot that bill themselves, went up the ladder to our delegates, whatever we wanna call them, and got additional funding. We certainly need it up here. I don't know if we've contacted any representatives yet about additional funding, but I think the county should get involved below the dam then, too. Like I said, I, you know, piecemeal in this thing. It's time, time has come to get something done. And like I said, Spotswood got it, they got additional funding, and like I said, we, we just gotta start, start the process and be ready, okay? And, and go from there. That's it, I appreciate it.
Let's see, we have other comments? So, we have.
Close the public portion.
Close the comment course, portion of, of the meeting, and would council, is there anything further, anyone on the council would like to bring up at this time?
I, I'd just like to reiterate what Councilman Potter said about thanking the fire and rescue people. And I was fortunate to get onto the site at the fire, and what I saw, to me, was pretty amazing, because I, I'd spoken to a police officer there. There were, he told me at least fifty to sixty trucks from towns as far away as Barniget, Hunterdon County, Morris County, even Washington Township, sent a truck. And I guess some people thought I was somebody, because I kept walking and walking, and police officers actually walked me across. I said it was a councilman in town, and he said, "Do you wanna see your people?" And I said, "Yes, please." And I, I was fortunate to see them. And what I'll say is, they were there from after, after four o'clock that day till, they didn't get back, fire and rescue, till after seven AM. And what I'd say is, is to people, please, please recognize this. You see police officers, rescue squad members, fire department members, please thank them, because they're there, because you can't be. And, and there were hundreds of people there, there were hundreds of first responders, and it's, it's pretty amazing to see them as selfless as they were. And I, I feel so fortunate I got to see that. So, and that's, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank our Public Works and also the council people who were on there, did the tree trimming for us. I got an alert from, on my ring, and it said Albert Avenue, the power was out, and I'm looking down the street, and I don't see any power, and then on the ring, I found out it was Albert Avenue in, or Albert Street in South River, when it came up on my ring. And I remember when I first moved to Milltown, and we used to go out five, ten times in the summer, when the power used to go out on our street, and that, that's improved a lot, and I, I just wanna thank the people who were involved, the DPW and the electricity and our council people that did the tree trimming, because we didn't lose power, and that's quite an accomplishment.
I, I don't know if we're going down the line, I was kinda waiting. I got a, I got two quick, very quick things. Number one, I wanna thank the people who came here tonight and spoke from both sides. I think, you know, open communication, even though there's a difference of opinions and different perspectives, the open communication that you guys showed and your willingness to work together, I think, says a lot, and it's commendable, and I think it's, it's one of those things that could be a good lesson for all the residents in town. And, you know, while we're not judge and jury, I was super happy to see that you guys are both willing to come together and try and, try and resolve the differences. So I thank you for that. And number two, that was a little, little love from me, but it is Valentine's Day coming up this week, February fourteenth. So if you got that special someone, spend some time with them, show them you love them. I'd like to thank our clerk for the little chocolate hearts. Mine will be going to my wife, don't tell her that you gave it to me. Nonetheless, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
You are not my Valentine, Councilman, don't worry.
And let's not also forget we have President's Day this coming weekend, so.
Yes.
Recognize that as well.
That's the council comments. I have a few comments, and I will be very brief. I would like to thank Laura Dune from News Twelve, New Jersey, for coming out to Milltown and running the Main Street, New Jersey Spotlight for, for who had businesses in town. Maria's Pizza, Dee's Floral Creations, and Rescue by Lacy, Milltown Diner, A&amp;M Vacuum, and Milltown Tex-Mex. I also learned from Dee and Al that they do not only sell flower arrangements, but they also do fruit baskets, which was a very nice thing to, to find out. And I was, I know it was a little earlier, but we had a Ms. Julian Ryan from the AFC Urgent Care that will be opening up on Friday, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. That's where the old coffee bar is. So if I can ask the clerk to reach out to the police, fire chiefs, captain from the rescue squad, Public Works supervisor, and superintendent of the schools, just to share the grand opening with them. And they actually, she was going to explain everything, but they do basically full service from x-rays, lacerations, it's a full medimerge, they have full staff that they will have there. They have another facility in Old Bridge that they actually, that they have currently. This is a second, second location that they're, that they have. And we're gonna be doing a ribbon cutting on Friday, February twenty-third, at one to three o'clock PM over there. So they welcome everybody from Milltown, all mayor, the council, of course. So it's gonna be a nice, nice event, and it's nice to have a business in Milltown where they do drug testing, they do everything. So that's why I was saying, reach out, let everyone know that they're full service for us. I know I go to medimerges quite a bit, because I do a lot of stupid things. So.
And Mr. Mayor, I also have, Fourth of July, I have the big scissor and the ribbon that we could use for that as well.
And if you cut yourself, they can stitch you up.
Right there, we're right there.
Yes. So my last comment is, I do wanna thank the residents and the church. I am in a very unique situation, because not only do I know the residents and I know the church, I am, because I am the scout leader, I'm in a different predicament with that. So I had begged with the borough attorney to make sure that he left me completely out of everything and any kind of situation with that, because I'm just in a weird spot. So I just, you know, I want everyone to understand that, that because I do know everyone in the, the situation, and I, because of the scouts, our trailer is in the back there, I am in a real weird predicament with that. So I thank everyone for understanding that, and I thank Peter for guiding me with that immensely. So, thank you, Peter. Without any further ado, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No, whoa, 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 whoa. Whoa, whoa, whoa. I know we're very excited, but we still have our little agenda session at the end of the agenda, ladies.
Okay, I apologize. Next on the agenda, we have for discussion for the February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
First, we have the presentation from Milltown Little League that was supposed to happen today, but they need a little more time, so. to happen today, but they need a little more time, so we'll have that. Next is a second reading ordinance for the salary and wages, and then the Human Relations Commission, hopefully by then we'll know if any members will be returning or if anybody else needs to be reappointed, so that's what's lined up on the agenda so far.
Okay, very good.
Now.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Potter. All in favor? Thank you.